The regularly scheduled council meeting of the Council of the Town of Southern Shores for May 7, 2013 is in order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible) of the United States of America to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Let's join together in a moment in silence, please. Counsel, we have an agenda. It is your pleasure.
I move we approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Same side? We have an agenda. Before we start, a couple of comments. I have been watching the Channel 20 rebroadcast of our meetings. And I would urge counsel very much, when you speak, speak directly into the microphone. Our meeting and workshop where we discussed the manager's draft budget was hardly understandable through a large part of it. So, I know we like to look at the people we're talking to. That's been our admonishment since we were kids. But in this case, just look at the microphone and speak directly into it. Also, I would remind anybody who wants to speak at public comment to sign up. Mr. Haskett has a sign up sheet in front of him. Chief Cole?
Thank you, Mayor, members of counsel. It's my honor and my privilege to introduce the newest addition to our police department, and that's Officer Brad Eilert, if he would come up front here. It's an easy crowd, so you should be okay. I'm just going to give you a little bit of background on Brad. Brad was born in Petersburg, Virginia. He received his associate's degree in 1998 from Richard Bland College. Became a road deputy shortly thereafter in the Isle of Wight County Sheriff's Office in Virginia. In 2001, he joined Nagshead Police Department where he served for 12 years. He worked his way up through the ranks, up to detective and then also to a sergeant. He's also a graduate of the FBI National Academy in 2010, the 240th session. Brad's father also attended the FBI National Academy and graduated in the 1980s. In 2012, Brad achieved a bachelor's degree in criminal justice from Old Dominion University. He also holds his advanced law enforcement certificate as well as an investigation certificate. I think his mother's the only one that wasn't in law enforcement, correct? His father worked his rank way up through the ranks to the chief of police in Petersburg, Virginia Police Department and retired in 1999. His sister Stephanie is a detective sergeant in Colonial Heights, Virginia with 20 years of service. His twin brother Chad is a patrol sergeant in Prince George County, Virginia. He has 13 years of service. His spouse Becca, she is a registered nurse, works in the ER here at the Outer Banks Hospital. And she is also a sexual assault examiner, which takes a special kind of person. And they have two children, Brayden, seven, and Barrett, two. He is a tremendous asset to the Southern Shores Police Department. We're very fortunate to have such a caliber of an individual here. Brad, welcome.
Yes, it's a pleasure.
You've joined a great force. Counsel, consent agenda is before you. Tab one. Minutes of April 16 in the usual annual inter-local agreement for hurricane debris removal. Much a pleasure.
I move that we approve the consent agendas.
Let's have a second, please.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Same side. Staff reports. Wes Haskett?
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I have a brief report for you for the month of April. And I'll start out with, we will have a planning board meeting this, in two weeks, a week from Monday, which will be ZTA 1302. This will be a zoning text amendment application that was submitted by Duckwoods Country Club. And this is a request to amend the current sign ordinance to allow for one freestanding sign per street frontage for country clubs. This application, as I said, will be reviewed by the town planning board at their May 20 meeting. For permitting and inspection for April, there were two zoning permits issued, 32 building permits issued. That consisted of one new single-family dwelling, seven additions, 24 others. There were 99 building inspections conducted at 51 different job sites. There are currently 15 single-family dwellings under construction, as well as one bank. And the total amount of fees collected in April was $11,722.50. I'll also just touch on, you may have received a link or an email regarding the Abomorral Regional Bicycle Plan. And I'll tell this to everyone as well, the Abomorral Regional Bicycle Plan has been an effort with all the municipalities and counties in the Abomorral Region. And there is a bicycle plan being, that has been drafted and created with members of a steering committee, the regional planner, as well as representatives from the other counties and municipalities. And that draft plan is available for review on their website. And public comment is encouraged. So, I'd encourage you to go to that website where there is a link to the draft, Abomorral Regional Bicycle Plan. And you can provide comments up until June 1st. So, if you go to the Town of Southern Shores website, there is a link under news where you can go to that website and you can download the draft plan and review it and provide Indian Oil comments prior to June 1st. Eventually, up after June 1st, Indian Oil comments will be addressed. And it's most likely around September or October, the consultant, which is a group called Alta Greenways out of Raleigh, as well as Steve Lambert, the Abomorral Regional Planner, they will both come and give a presentation to you all seeking approval. And that'll most likely take place in September or October. So, it's an interesting, it's a lengthy document, but it does address their county as well as all the municipalities and all the other municipalities and counties in the Abomorral Region. So, I encourage you all to take a look at it. That concludes my report. Any questions?
I do. How is our, anything on cell phones?
I have not received an application yet for a new tower in Southern Shores.
How about an ice machine?
I have not received, we have not received an application for an ice machine. No, sir.
All right, thank you.
I know that with respect to the new tower, it most likely will be coming in the next month or two.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Counsel?
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Wes Haskett. Chief Cole?
Thank you once again. The report for the month of April 2013. Officers handled 1,008 calls for service. Some of the highlights are, they conducted 28-foot patrol, 37 traffic control, 225 residence checks, 274 business checks. The investigators conducted 44 different investigation follow-ups. We had one burglary, responded to 11 alarms, 16 suspicious person calls, five assist motorists, 13 mutual aid calls. We had a total of 26 incidents that were crime-related. Four burglaries, eight larcenies, two assaults, two criminal damage, and we had one that was drug-related. Officers made nine criminal arrests for the month of April. They conducted 89 traffic stops. Out of the 89 traffic stops, 31 written citations were issued and another 52 warning citations. Three ordinance violations, which were parking citations that were issued. One other thing I would like to read to you, it's a news release that we sent out earlier today. And on May 3, 2013, Southern Shores Police Officers with the assistance of North Carolina alcohol and law enforcement agents conducted a follow-up investigation based on information that we had received about a suspicious package that had been intercepted by Norfolk Police Department. This follow-up investigation led to a search warrant being issued for 53 Skyline Drive in Southern Shores. Upon execution of the search warrant, Southern Shores officers along with the assistance of the ALE agents and Nagshead Police Department's K-9 unit, we seized over a pound of marijuana along with several other drug paraphernalia and cash that were located throughout the residence. The owner of the residence, Randy Hargus, was charged with felony possession of marijuana, possession with intent to sell, and also possession, misdemeanor possession of drug paraphernalia. Harris was taken to the Dare County Jail where he was held on $5,500 bail. Any questions? Thank you.
Is 53 a rental home?
No.
No.
They just moved in.
They bought the house.
Our new neighbors.
Thank you. Don't see Chief Harvey tonight. We'll forego the volunteer fire department report. Southern Shore Civic Association, we have with us tonight, Mr. Jim Keller, a member of the board, who will give the report. Good evening, Jim.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Ross told me that his back hurts and he can't talk. I was in the medical device business for 27 years. I don't know the connection, but I'm happy to help him out. Just a couple of items to post the council on. First, relative to the dredge project. Once we were notified by the town manager that the Holly Trail site was no longer targeted for use, we terminated the work being done by our legal counsel relative to the treasure agreement. We're awaiting his legal bills and we will forward them to the town upon their receipt. Last Thursday, we received two emails from OnLaw Engineering, I believe that's how you pronounce it. The first indicating interest in using an SSCA property at Tall Pines. And quickly thereafter, a second email that rescinded that interest and indicated that a private property had been identified. What's important for the council to know is that given the SSCA bylaws and the procedures which we would have to follow to get membership approval, if the private property option does fall through, and we certainly hope it doesn't, it's probably unlikely that the SSCA, another SSCA property could be approved by our membership within your timeline. That's just something to be aware of. Second point of interest is the AT&amp;T cell tower. The lease terms are essentially unchanged from the document that was worked on about three years ago. At the moment, the attachments or the drawings are being finalized. There's one issue, which is that the town ordinance governing wireless telecommunications sites and towers calls for a chain link fence to act as the enclosure for the tower and the equipment at a height up to six feet. The SSCA is currently in the process of submitting a general application form for planning board approval, which would allow for language that would allow for a wall to serve as the enclosure and up to a height of 14 feet, and a wall which also would include logos for both the SSCA as well as the Town of Southern Shores. We're hoping that the, that application could come before the June planning board meeting. Lastly, two quick notes. Our new basketball court at Seale's Park has been poured, still needs to be lined, but that's imminent, as well as the installation of the plumbing for the new shower at Hillcrest Beach, which is targeted to be done tomorrow. I'd be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Jim. Thank you, SSCA, for all you do for the town. Chickahawck? Mr. Leo Hall?
Good evening, everyone. Just a couple notes to bring you up to date. At our April, excuse me, at our April meeting, we elected our officers for 2013 and 2014. And the president is, happens to be yours truly here. And vice president is Chris Nason, treasurer. Jim Corando over there. Secretary is Kathy Krieger. And then properties chairman is Joe McGraw. Parks and Recreation Facilities, we split it with Cory Taylor and Carlos Mercado. ARB Committee Chair is Bob Betts. And our long-range plan committee chairman is Ben Williams. I have a copy of this to give to you, Sheila. And also, the other, that got through the officers, so we start over with a couple new people and still have Cory to kind of guide us along for another year, or his term expires in March. We did get the rail, split rail fence replaced up at Chickahawck Light and 12. Sure makes that entrance look a lot better now. We also had some problems with trash cans over at Trinity Park, so we replaced one of those. We added a recycle bin there. Also, we're, next project we're working on is Potoski Park there, putting, finally putting us, hopefully getting a split rail fence at each end. I was digging through some files today in the office and I see that recommendation was there in 1991. So, progress moves fast. And the other thing we're working on is with the Carmen family, a memorial to Bruce. We met with them Saturday over at Trinity Park. And the proposal at this time, and we've given them the information, they would like to put a bike rack there. And so, it's into what they want, we're going to, if we do it, it'll be a resin-type rack that, rather than wooden, and won't deteriorate and looks, will look a lot better and hold up in the weather we have here. So, those are the things we got running right at this particular point in time. And by the way, Carlos is going to be actively involved in doing some work with the Botchi Ball Court there in Trinity as well. Anybody got any questions of us? Okay?
Thank you very much, Leo. Sounds as if you've been busy.
Oh, yeah. We've got things happening. I don't know if, we'll get something done even if it's wrong.
Mr. Haskett, we have anyone signed up for public comment? We turn to the town manager for a presentation filing of his proposed budget. Tab two.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. This entire tab will be placed on the town website tomorrow for the public to view. And in accordance with the general statutes, this is the official filing time for this year's proposed budget. And this entire package has information as well as the budget officer's budget message, which is required as well. So, all that will be placed on the website tomorrow for viewing by the public in anticipation of the public hearing that the mayor has declared on this for June the 4th meeting. Tonight, however, I'd like to highlight the actual line items of the budget as we did, as I did at the last meeting, and just go over them. And they are on the screen. And so, I'll start in the tab on about page.
Who can read them out there?
I'll start on the tab, in the tab two on about page six for these line items. Again, this will be on the website tomorrow. And I'll just remind counsel as well that due to the revaluation, of course, southern, the property values in Southern Shores decreased 28 percent. And based on the recalculation of that base, the revenue neutral rate is 22 cents. So, of course, the rate is what would, it would take to generate the same amount of revenue to pay for last year's expenses adjusted for growth. One penny of this year's rate equals $128,210. So, starting on this first page, and we'll go to, on the far right there, FY 1314, recommended, that far right column that's filled in. And I'll just remind, as we go through, the previous years on the far left are the way we have devised this proposal, this presentation for auditing and accounting purposes. So, it does go back several years. And then there'll be some lines that'll remain that had activity several years back that do not this year, and there'll be a dash or a blank line on those. This first page is a general fund summary of revenues, expenditures. This year's budget will be a $5.5 million budget. As you can see, it is balanced and I do not call, I do not propose to you any tax increase over the revenue neutral, revenue neutral rate. Despite what was reported in the paper, in the electronic newspaper online this week, I do not call for any tax increase in this particular budget. Under revenues, you can see the Abomorral taxes, 2.8, other revenues of 2.5, a total of $5,372,000. The other financing sources, as explained in the previous work session, have been proceeds from leases for accounting purposes, and it also shows as reimbursement in a grant fund there, shown as the NCDOT lease proceeds for Tall Pine Bridge, which is projected for this year, making that a total revenues of $5,598,065. Under expenditures, you can see the totals there for the administrative department, for the code enforcement department, in this column here, the police department, public works, streets, bridges and canals, which was broken out from public works based on the town's activities, sanitation services, fire contracted services, ocean rescue contracted services, and then the transfer out for capital reserve fund for streets, which is the amount that the council has designated to be budgeted this year of 516. And then a remainder out that would be transferred to capital reserve fund left over from revenues generated, bringing the total expenditures of $5,598,065, which is balanced here. There are two highlighted notes here. Of course, again, one penny equals $128,210 for this fiscal year of 1314. And I'll also call your attention to this amount of $516,000, which council designated to be budgeted in capital reserve for street improvements for the year. For the last eight years, or possibly shorter than that, there was, council had resolved that three cents out of the rate would go towards street improvements each year. Now, this is the revenue, revenue neutral rate based on the new revaluation. So, .0402 cents would be the equivalent of three cents that would generate the same amount under this year's revaluation.
The three cents was by action of the council of three years ago, four years ago.
And this gets into the specifics of the revenues. Again, property taxes, you'll see totaled $2,870,505. You can also see the occupancy, sales tax and land transfer tax of 1.9. And again, this is the town's share under the distribution, the statutory distribution formula for all municipalities in Dare County and Dare County as well. So, that is our share of that revenue, the projected share for this year. Under the unrestricted intergovernmental revenues, franchise tax, programming, video programming, telecommunications tax, the peg channel revenue, ABC revenues, beer and wine tax, and the solid waste disposal tax, all these come to the town via arrangements, agreements, and statutory formulas. So, they total 327,300. Under restricted intergovernmental revenues, the town's pile bill projections for the year based on street mileage in Southern Shores is $114,000. And various small grants, and a projected grant here for the pedestrian bike, the path, and again, that's a maybe, if we get that, that is projected, if we get that grant. So, the total restricted intergovernmental revenues of $143,100. Following that, on the next page, permits and fees. You can see, based on trending, we've projected an increase in building permits for the year over last year, and this year we're projecting $75,000. Everything else would stay the same for a total permits and fees of $92,100. Under other revenues, interest, basic interest income, we do not have, well, you see dashes, there won't be any projected revenues. This was taken care of in changes to operations. Charter communications, there's a revenue. There are rents for the building, and we do have miscellaneous revenues that come in for various items. And then the bulkhead leases here, a minimum amount, we did discuss that, for bulkhead leases for those properties that do not actually abut waterfront, but actually have, are adjacent to town right-of-way and lease for the right to put a dock or pier in that location. Total of other revenues, $22,450, and total other revenues of 2.5, making the total revenue for the town again of $5,372,65. So, that's the detail of the revenues for the year. Following that, in the budget are line items for each department. And we're going on this column here, FY 1314, recommended. Again, in each department, there'll be a salary adjustment for project, proposed cost of living adjustments. So, salaries, FICA, group health insurance, employee retirement, all are the typical employee compensations. Also, there's a merit program proposed this year, and all of the employee merit has been placed in the admin department. Following that, of course, our unemployment payments for the year projected have decreased, we project those to decrease. Contracted. Contracted services for various service contracts that the admin department uses. Council compensation. Legal services, I will comment that I'm projecting that to be the same expense, but that contract does call for an increase in the hourly rate this year. So we will be working, continuing to work off our, our contract. Audit services for the year, projected, and of course, on your agenda, we'll be going over the audit contract for the year. Payroll, computer services, insurance and bonds has an increase. Advertising, travel, telephone, utilities, dues and subscriptions, training, supplies, postage, equipment leasing maintenance, and municipal elections. We do have elections this year. In that amount, we discussed at the staff level of including some other costs as well that were not included in previous year, and that would be some cleaning of the, of the building as well after the elections for those times. Dare County tax collection, which is based on a contract formula, the PEG channel, government access membership dues, our cost to update the town code, vehicle operations for admin, employee recognition, wellness initiative, which we have done each year. Let's see, there is a contingent, a small contingency that we'd like to propose to continue with. And then skipping to recording of meetings. You can see, this will be the first full year that we have done this, and we're proposing that to be an increase of $15,600 based on the time that we have seen and experienced in the meetings for videotaping. And then the cleaning of town buildings. So that brings a total projected cost for the admin department of $932,610. On the next page is code enforcement and inspections. Really, there is, this department runs lean and mean, so to speak, but basically, the only changes here would be in the COLA, same, same projections for the salaried cost. And then we've dropped to advertising, travel, dues and subscriptions, training, uniforms, supplies, vehicle maintenance, vehicle operations, homeowner's recovery fee, and flood zone map mailing. And then we would skip to a contingency for that department proposed for $2,000 for the year, and equipment purchase, we discussed. And then, again, this last item is the projected receipt of the grant, if the department is successful in receiving that grant. So you can see the increase basically is those items that we did talk about in the salaried items plus the grant consideration. So total of expense of that department, $227,420. The next is the police department. And the first item is the salaries, and again, we're working off this column of FY 13, recommended. And the salaries here are different because of the various adjustments that council made to the various, for various positions and filling of various positions within that department. So there is an increase in that, and then we come down to all the salaried cost, through all the salaried cost, excuse me. And there's a line for career development, computer services, printing cost, advertising, travel, dues and subscriptions, training, medical testing, uniforms, and supplies, contracted services, equipment purchases, vehicles maintenance and repair, vehicle operations, and the department contingency that we began last year. And then debt service for the vehicle debt and capital outlay for the vehicles. So those two items are related somewhat, but one is for new and one is for existing loans. Total amount for the department, $1,368,390. And then the usual separation allowance that's required for the, the transfer to the pension fund of $15,000. Total police budget, $1,383,390. I've put a note here, highlighted that based on council's action at the last meeting, we had proposed the addition of a garage to the existing police department building, and as per the council's direction, that was to be included in the debt to be incurred for the capital project that we'll talk about in a minute. So that is the police budget, and we'll switch to the next page, which is streets, bridges, and canals. And again, this basically is set up as a separate department for auditing and accounting purposes now. We're running off of this line. And again, this year, the Trinity Culvert Bridge, I do not show a proposed expense for that, and I would again ask council to consider that when that invoice arrives, we will present that to council to be paid for out of the existing undesignated fund balance, or unless we have another line in the budget by that time that we could use. Bridge maintenance, we have a line there, $1,500. Street sign maintenance, which is a continuation of the required upgrade of street signs. Street maintenance is a new line that council directed, the budget officer, to place for this year of $20,000, and that would be every, every day, every week, every month, items such as potholes, et cetera, that we can use to, to actually upgrade, excuse me, repair streets throughout the year. The Tall Pine Bridge, again, is a grant, municipal grant program, but there is an in and out, of course, as you recall, a formula for that, and we must show an expense. So that is the projected expense for the year of $190,000. There's an offsetting revenue percentage of that that we will be getting back. Engineering, and again, this is the item that I misspoke about in the previous meeting. This is the project specific cost here, $42,000, which is attributed to all the projects. So the, this is the total that we project would be needed for project specific engineering cost. Brush trimming and tree removal is a line that we have used extensively to draw on for public works to be able to have to periodically trim and remove trees, and we've used that to pay our brush contractor to do that with. Storm debris cleanup, I will say that this, we've reduced this item $5,000 this year. If necessary, we can move, or recommend the council to move some other money, but at this point, I would recommend us leaving it at $20,000. Total street projects, $291,000. Canals, the expense shown here is the canal dredging project debt service payment for year one, $246,800. And of course, that's reduced over the last meeting based on the, the new bid that came in and the new term sheet that's arrived by the lender that would account for that. So that would be the first payment due for the canal project. Waterway maintenance and repair, we discussed that at the retreat. That's for the town's share of signage that may, we may need to join in with the other entities with in repairing markers. So the total canal project here for the year, $247,200. So the total streets, bridges, and canals, $538,200. And I will note again that the $246 payment, the debt service here for this capital project also includes improvements to the town hall complex and the addition of the police department garage, which was discussed at the last meeting. Those items for the town hall complex must be included in this particular project in order to gain local government commission approval for the entire debt. Moving on to the actual public works department, we'll start in this FY 1314, recommended column again. The very first line is salaries. In that increased proposal is the proposal of a public works director, which we talked about at two previous meetings, and council has directed it to be included in this proposed budget. This would be a director who would head the actual public works department to include all the contracted services as well as the capital projects for the town. The other items here are the salaried items, salaried expenses. And I'll call your attention to this line, the engineering services of $5,000. That is the everyday on-call engineering services that we project for the year. That's when the contract engineer is just called for everyday questions, and we can take a look at this or take a look at that type work requests. Skipping down, we have training, travel, uniforms, supplies, safety compliance, town buildings, maintenance and repairs, beautification of grounds, equipment lease and maintenance, equipment purchase, and vehicle maintenance and repair, vehicle operations. And we skip down to a small contingency that we've been working off of. We've done very well in projecting the, the specific cost of the department so far. We've got medical testing and parking lot maintenance for a total of $374,730 with just that one department without these streets, bridges, and canals. And again, I've highlighted a note here that says that $45,000 would be included in the town's capital project, and that is for the carpeting and security systems for these buildings. So that would be included in the capital project as well. The next page contains the town sanitation services, FY 1314, recommended in this column. Excuse me, residential collection, $180,000, commercial collection, $38,000. The landfill, landfill tipping fee, $153,000, recycling collection, $140,000. Contingency proposed, $2,000, large item pickup, $3,000. And then our chipping program, $130,000. Total sanitation services, $646,000 proposed. The next page is the fire department services for FY 1314. And again, this is per the existing contract with the Southern Shores Volunteer Fire Department, And recall that the contract is based on the previous year's amount, which sets the threshold or base for the next year unless the fire department requests an increase. And the amount shown there is the exact same as the previous year. And 800 megahertz radio cost of which, of 50,000 of which there is one year left, I believe. Is that correct? One year left after this year. Total fire department expense of $525,505. And again, I will note that that $475,505, this is the revenue neutral rate if we're comparing rates and rate again. The contract itself references rate, so .0371, .0371 is the actual revenue neutral rate for the fire department expense at this point. Next page is our ocean rescue services contract for this year, $156,000. And that ends the general fund. And this year, for the first time, we are proposing, staff is proposing to council, based on the discussions with council through the year, a cemetery fund establishment for year FY 1314 to set us, to demarcate the expenses and income for the cemetery so that we can track that separately. This year, revenue projections, I propose as budget officer that $9,990 be transferred from the actual cemetery fund, which is a part of the undesigned fund balance. And also, I project $5,000 in revenue from the sale of lots. Hopefully, it'll be a lot more than that, but that's what, we're trying to be conservative on that for a total projected revenue of $10,990. The expenses, again, labor expenses, and again, and the labor expenses are mostly during the seasonal month, the summer, late spring, summer, and early fall time. And beautification being seed, fertilizer, and any other supplies. And also, the annual license fee for the software that we're now using to track the plots that are, have been sold and are to be sold, rather than use paper maps. We'll go electronic with that. So the total budget for the cemetery fund is projected to be $10,990 for the year. That is a synopsis of this year's proposed budget. Prior to June the 4th, again, I'll be proposing an actual budget ordinance to the council. It will contain the budget for the general fund, budget for the cemetery fund, and it will also show a capital project for Phase Two of the canals. As required by law, since that is borrowed money, you'll have a separate section in that budget ordinance for a capital project ordinance provision as well. So that'll be coming out in the budget ordinance that will be submitted to you ahead of the June 4th meeting. And that will, of course, anticipate the June 4th public hearing. And I'll be glad to try to answer any more questions from the council tonight on what we presented here.
I have a question. On page one, and again, this could be a, this could be strictly a method of doing finance. I am not skilled in this area of my life. We say that we have $516,000 that we collect .0402 cents for streets, and then we list under expenditures, transfer out to capital reserve funds for streets, $516,000. So we list it under our expenditures, but I don't find any place here, especially in streets, bridges, and canals, that we showed that we actually have $516,000 that we're going to spend on streets. So people looking at streets, bridges, and canals will not see $516,000 that we're going to be spending on streets.
Well, let me explain that. Recall that when we set this up, council directed that we have that discussion at the workshop meeting in June to establish a budget for the capital reserve fund slash streets. So it is not here yet, you're correct. But the money's there, but in June or anytime thereafter during the fiscal year, council can establish a capital budget for streets using that 516.
And that would appear here in streets and bridges and canals?
Well, we would, we would actually establish, we could put it anywhere we wanted to, but the budget, this budget would have already been published, but it would come out as a capital budget in itself at that point in time.
Okay, alright, yeah. Is there any way of notifying that or listing it someplace so people are aware of that?
Well, what you'd be doing is notifying them that you're definitely going to spend $516,000 when you hadn't decided what to spend it on. So I don't know how else you would show that.
Unless maybe on the actual page for streets, bridges, and canals, I mean, if you want us to maybe put a notation on lots with that an asterisk or something.
We can. We can say, you put an asterisk saying, and it is anticipated that council will approve appropriate expenditure of 516.
I mean, because we mentioned that on the first parts, we mentioned that twice on the, on the, on what we're going to do, at least on the expenditure side, but when it gets to people look at street bridges and go, what happened to $516,000?
Yeah. Well, it's, you know, and technically, legally, and here on the document, it's gone into the capital reserve fund slash streets. But we can note, put an asterisk saying. But we can note, put an asterisk saying it is our understanding that capital, council intends to spend that or designate that for street maintenance or street improvements at some point.
So as long as people are aware of that we're doing that.
Should, should we decide where to spend that $516,000 before we enact this budget? It could be shown in this budget.
That's correct. If you go back to the way you, the council has done it in previous years and decide on individual streets ahead of time, then it could be listed here. We could do that way.
Manager, you and the engineer are coming to us when on your proposed budget for streets next year?
We are... June the 18th.
June 18th. Our workshop meeting. Okay, councilman?
Yeah. I understand the thinking, but I'm not sure I agree with it, but that's okay. Not a problem.
Do you give me, can you give me some suggestions?
Well, no, I mean, I just think that I categor, I mean, I understand the logic saying that we have $516,000 and we don't know what streets we're going to fix, therefore, we're not going to put down the streets we're going to repair. But then again, we have $20,000 for street maintenance, so we don't say what we're going to maintain for $20,000. We have engineering, but we're not going to say what we're going to engineer for $42,000. We don't talk about what storm we're going to clean up. So if we don't specify those scenarios of what we're going to actually do with those categories, why do we need to exactly specify what exact street we're going to fix at the time and name it without putting a line saying, "Street repair for $516,000"?
All we're doing with this budget is transferring money to the reserve and calling it streets. We may never spend that. We may never fix a street. All we're saying is we want to set aside as our promise of those three cents from three or four years ago, is that we're going to put aside $516,000 in the capital reserve fund for streets. It could very well be that we'd be done and we say, "We're not going to spend it till next year." Or we'll name certain streets to be spent this year. It's just being put into a fund at the moment.
What, we could also come up with a whole nother sheet and say, "Capital Reserve Fund Slash Streets," and it'll show 516 coming in and 516 going out. Just won't list the streets because you haven't gone through that exercise of picking streets.
And you're going to say $42,000 that's in there for the engineering services, that's actually a percentage of the 516, so that will be project specific once you guys make the streets which we'll do.
Which again proves my point even further, that we have separated out the engineering of those streets and put down $42,000, but not mention the fact that we got 516 that we're going to use for streets. So why not just throw another page in about streets and do it that way?
Well, we've separated the engineering out. We haven't designated it for any particular street.
So while we separate out the streets without designating for any particular street, we do the same thing?
All, all those other pages are doing is more detail explaining these expenditure lines.
I understand that part. I understand it all.
I just, I, it just, this makes perfect sense to me. I'm sorry.
Okay. All right. It's not a problem. As long as people know that we're going to try to spend $516,000 to repair roads.
What will happen, once we make the transfers to the capital reserve fund of 516, when the council says they want to do A, B, C, street, whatever, specific, then what will happen is that that will have to come back into the general fund and to the streets, bridges and canal department and be spent from there. So I think the way that we were proposing to do it was to put the money aside and then once we adopt the operating budget, then we go back inside the streets we're leaving and at that time, we'll share where the 516 is going.
Okay.
In, in the three prior years, we have identified the streets package before the budget was put together. We have not done that this year. I regret that we have not done that this year, but that's the way the business is being done. I have one thought on this budget that, in a way, I hesitate to bring it up, but on the other hand, it's been on my mind for some time. We have a $3.5 million fund balance. We're borrowing $1.5 million.
Is that a good figure?
Yes, sir.
I'm wondering, I keep wondering, do we really need to borrow? It would mean a change in our ordinance where we specified that we maintain a fund balance of what? 75% of the budget? It would draw us below that. If it weren't for a couple of contingencies on the horizon, I would push for no borrowing. But being super cautious, I think I'm just going to go with the approach that we have on the table today. Ask you to think about it. If you want to. Ignore it if you want to.
Well, if we do borrow, is, is there a prepayment penalty or early payment penalty? If you pay it off?
Well, there, technically, there's not, but there is a formula there that in case the interest rates on Nationwide, on the market drop, so far, that could be, we could, in the first year, we could still, if we decided to pay off with a designated fund balance, that could be done.
Or at any time over seven years, it could be done.
In this budget, we give us the debt service money to plow into infrastructure and to keep our program going. But I do not, I will not bring it up again in considering this budget. I just wanted to get it off my chest, so to speak. Any other questions of the town manager? It will be on the website tomorrow. There will be a public hearing on the budget here on June 4th. We are required to act on this budget before midnight, June 30th, 2013. At the public hearing, we will decide when we want to act on this budget. We turn to new business, town manager, the auditor's contract.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, when I arrived in 2010, it appeared to me to be the council's procedure to enter into a separate contract annually with, with the current auditor at that time. And that is the practice that the council has engaged in since then. And this is your annual audit contract proposed by Ms. Osborne. And I noticed from the minutes when this was first instituted in May of 2009, that it was council's intent at that time for this to be a three-year arrangement, I believe. So this would be the last year under that particular arrangement that council discussed in 2009. And I asked the finance officer if she would comment or help me answer any specific questions, but it's basically the same contract that council approved last year and the amount that was shown on the budget.
What's your pleasure, council?
Well, I guess I'll move to accept the contract, the current 2013 contract with Doughty and Osborne for the amount listed.
Have a second.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. The, I don't know if the, the American Institute of Certified Public Accountants or if it's the Office of Management and Budget recommend a maximum of how many years? Does anyone know? There is a recommendation on the maximum number of years you should engage a single auditing entity to look. We have a problem out here on the Outer Banks of, I don't know that's a problem. The issue, the situation is that there are not many auditors on the Outer Banks that are qualified under the Local Government Commission to audit the towns. So we may have trouble finding somebody to bid. Isn't that correct?
That is, there are limited auditing firms on the beach and immediately off the beach. There are some statewide that, that do bid and audit for small local governments as
Council, the next item we have is this resolution to maintain and support the current integrity and funding for the Parks and Recreation Trust Fund. This is a state fund. It has been funded in the past by assessing a portion of the Deed Stamp Act, Deed Stamp Act, I think 75% each, to go into the Parks and Recreation Trust Fund. And I suspect this resolution arises because that trust fund is under attack in Raleigh. But we received this from the Board of Commissioners of the county for consideration. I sensed that there might be a desire by some council member to speak to it, so we took it out of the consent agenda. Who wants to speak to it? I see one. No? No? Okay. Things have changed. What is your pleasure with this resolution?
Well, I guess I'll move to adopt a resolution, Resolution 2013 Day Zero Five Day Zero One, Resolution to Maintain and Support the Current Integrity and Funding of the Parks and Recreation Trust Fund, PRTF.
I'll second.
Okay. Any more discussion? All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. We're ready for our town manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I have just a few things to go over as part of my report tonight. On June the 4th, the Local Government Commission will consider the town's application for the debt approval for the capital project for the canals and improvements to Town Hall complex. I have been conferring with Local Government Commission staff last week and will continue to do so. We did submit an application and our application was complete. And basically, our discussions have been just on explaining a couple of the items in, in the application. Also, on June the 4th, from 4:00 PM to 6:00 PM, the town's contract engineer, Kimley Horn, will conduct an information meeting here in this building on the Tall Pine Bridge Project. It'll be for the public and we will be notifying the public. And Kimley Horn will also be notifying the population of a certain radius of the bridge as well on both sides of the canal. So at that point, a timeline, projected timeline and specifics of the project will be explained and they'll have it set up here in this room on Tuesday, June 4th, from 4:00 PM to 6:00 PM. Also want to remind council that the Outer Banks Chamber of Commerce's meet and greet for elected officials will be Thursday, June 30th, from 5:30 to 7:00 at the Ramada Inn in Kildover Hills. This is a different format than previous years. Previous years, it was panel discussion by mayors. This is a new format that the chamber board has developed and it will be basically a meet and greet, talking dialogue, et cetera, type of social event.
You said June 30th. Is it, is it May?
I'm sorry.
May 30th.
Thursday, May 30th. I'm, excuse me, May 30th. Thank you. If any council members want to go, please call us, Carrie or Sheila at Town Hall and we'll make sure that everybody gets signed up under the town's chamber membership. 5:30 to 7:00. Also, wanted to update you on the fact that hopefully, at the May 21st workshop, the chief and I may have an announcement and/or introduction for this season's Community Resource Officer. Hopefully, he'll be online by the middle of this month and we'll hopefully be introducing you to the CRO for the season. And at the June 4th meeting, it is my intent and the director's intent to introduce to you the lifeguards for this season as well. So hopefully, we'll have all them online by that time and introduce them to you at the June 4th meeting. And that is manager's report. I'll be glad to try to answer any questions, comments or concerns at this point.
Carry on, town, town attorney.
I don't have anything to report, Mr. Mayor.
There's a move afoot on Tall Pine to lean on the mayor to remove that big tree at the entry of Tall Pine on Dogwood Trail. I think there are eight residents over there and five of them are on my case. It is a dangerous tree. It is a failing tree. You can see where it has been damaged repeatedly by cars hitting it inadvertently. So take a look at the tree, council. I know, I have in mind what happened when we removed the tree at the intersection of East Dogwood and Dogwood Trail. And I would like to try to avoid any such action upon the removal of this tree. I'd take it, ask you to take a look at it.
Give a chainsaw?
It's the only thing I...
Do you have a chainsaw?
Do you have a chainsaw?
Do you have a chainsaw?
Oh.
So they asked you to remove it, didn't they? Anybody else? They've been asking you.
This, this is a major, major removal. I'm sure that when the developer put in Tall Pine Lane, it was probably a three-inch tree and he thought, "Oh, how nice."
They grow up.
And now it's a 30-inch tree and is up against the edge of the pavement.
Say where the bridge is going to be? Is it where the bridge is going to be? The new bridge? Is it close to the new bridge?
Yes, it's close to the new bridge.
Very perfect.
As a matter of fact, they may ask, they may, they may specify, the engineers may be specify that it'd be taken out. These people are anxious. That's all I have. There.
I have nothing, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
I do. I'd like to, I'd like to thank the, the town manager because it's his undying perseverance to get the NCDOT to put up our, finally, those signs they promised us over a year ago, I think it was, to instruct people who drive cars how to not run people over there trying to get across. trying to get across the crosswalks to the beach. So in case you haven't seen those signs, we have at least three, maybe four, but there's one at each entrance, I guess, north and south to our section of NC twelve, and there is one more definitely heading north, and I don't know whether there's a one more heading south. I was trying to find it, but I was trying to look for signs, and I needed to pay attention to the road. But they have at least some nice, big signs, and they tell people what they should do when they notice people in the crosswalks. So we've been successful in nagging the hell out of the NCDOT people continually and to get those signs out of their office and onto the road where they belong. So we've got them. So thank you.
Isn't it all?
That's it. That's it. That's it.
I don't have anything. Thank you.
Council, I move the town council go into closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute one forty-three days three eighteen dot eleven A. Section three, to consult with the attorney retained of the town in a matter, reserving the attorney-client privilege with regard to the matter of Sampson Contracting versus Town and Southern Shores at all. Section one, to prevent the disclosure of information that is privileged or confidential pursuant to the common law attorney-client privilege in North Carolina General Statutes one forty-three days three eighteen decimal ten E. I need a second.
I'll second the motion.
All those in favor going into closed session will indicate the same.
Aye.
That was loud enough.